We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Shucklian. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, she's not up here with us. We'll be led today by Supervisor Mike Innes.
Okay, let's salute our great American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Okay, we will now take up Board of Supervisors Matters, and I will start to my far right with Supervisor Michael T. Innes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a lot of people know, last week, we were in Sacramento at the CSAC convention, which I don't know what the other supervisors thought about it. It was fine, but to me, it just was a little, really not a lot of stuff that pertained to Tulare County in the mix. There was some of it, was, but other than that, it was an enjoyable time to be up there, but I just feel like it could have been, somebody could have put a little more thought into it and gotten more, you know, talked to the counties, the whole 58 counties, and find out what their real needs are. I think that's why this board likes to go to the RCRC, because that tends to be more pertinent to our county than the CSAC. But other than that, it was a good occasion. Tomorrow, we'll be out at the Sheriff and Fire for their open house, and looking forward to that. I was out there one time a little earlier, just to have some fingerprints done on me. They didn't do a mugshot, but they did do some fingerprints on me for my 4H leadership deal that I have to go through. But looking forward to that, and of course, the PAL and the bike giveaway, I guess, is going to be tomorrow morning out there, too. So looking forward to that and seeing their new digs out there. Sounds good. Thursday, we'll be meeting with the Tulianian Reservations Council on the moving of the casino and continuing to update each other on where we are on that. I know the board is not against this facility, but we continue to work with them over the impacts that it could have on us down the road once it's opened up. So, once we get that agreement done, I think we'll be just fine, and we're not, like I say again, we're not against moving the casino. I think it's a good idea, I think it's good for the community, I think it's good for Tulare County, but we just need to move forward with that. So, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, Supervisor Shucklian.
Okay, it's been a while since we met, so pretty much what Mike said. I was at the CSAC conference last week, had a new supervisors reunion. We had an academy when we first started, and so it was nice to get together after a year and talk to some other supervisors and see what's going on in their counties. There was also a very good workshop on homelessness that I attended with Sam and Jason. And over the past year or so, the League of California Cities and CSAC has had a task force on homelessness, and they've come together, and in January, they will be putting out a report on some findings. Sounds like they have some really good resources that they'll be putting out, that other communities have done to help in the, you know, battle, so to say, with homelessness and to help out those folks who are homeless. So I look forward to that. Other than that, tomorrow, I will also be at the open house of the Fire Department, New Fire Headquarters and Sheriff, so that's it.
All right, Supervisor Crocker.
Oh, wait, I forgot something.
Go ahead.
I always do. Yesterday, we had also to do with CSAC, Bill Schiatt, who is the Dean of the CSAC Institute. A lot of people have gone and taken classes, and we are looking to start doing classes here in Tulare County in September 2018, which I think is going to be a great opportunity for our employees to start taking some of these classes and get credential through CSAC, and also to bring other folks in. And we had two folks, Melinda, our executive assistant, received her credential, and Nilsa from HHSA received hers also, so that's it.
Okay, Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think last night, I had a Three Rivers Town Hall meeting, and the majority of the program last night was regarding ambulance service. I appreciate Karen Elliott for attending and the rest of the staff involved with some of our ambulance providers to kind of just provide a little bit more information regarding our metrics. We'd discussed this a couple of months previously in Three Rivers, and so I think that most of the, I don't know that they were exactly completely satisfied, but I think they understand the realities of living in a remote community, that there's inherently challenges as far as to providing service in the quickest time that they'd like to have. So, I felt that there were more than adequate responses, and the providers answered all the questions that were asked last night, and so I, hopefully, that that's, we can kind of move forward and, you know, we're looking to address a few other metrics to try and have a little more specific numbers as far as for those rural regions out there. Let's see, we have, I unfortunately will not be able to attend the grand opening of the new Fire and Sheriff's Headquarters, so I send my regrets, but I will be hopefully popping in, Chief, and we can find a good time to see the digs. I have an RCRC board meeting Wednesday, so I will not be able to attend. I also have a meeting Thursday with the Arts Consortium, the Visalia Arts Consortium, and something that I had bumped into, I attended, I believe, a month ago or so, an event that was hosted by the Tulare County Office of Education, and it was an arts initiative that they're trying to bring various groups together to just, you know, look at Tulare County and how we can provide arts. And I believe Mr. Kreps is interested in talking about public art and how it relates to our county facilities. And so I'm very interested in what, any ideas he has and any thoughts. I know that Patches in the mural, the Patches mural, was a great addition to our county facilities, and, you know, I think, this is a cat's meow.
It's perfect.
Eyes of the beholder.
Cat eyes. He is, you gotta look close. So I think there's some value to that, you know, I don't know as far as the scale or what ideas, but I think there is value, especially moving forward as we look at that. I think that many governments have that, and if we can do it in a, you know, in a manner that helps beautify our facilities and also enhances our community and do it in a cost-effective manner, that's, I think that's a good win. Let's see, this Friday, we also have a meeting of TCAG, an ad hoc committee, to review, the City of Lindsay has requested to review their penalty, their fine, that from some miscalculations or some, however we wanted to find, some issues that they had with Measure R spending in the past. And so we'll be meeting to review options and discuss that in further detail on Friday. Friday evening is the Visalia Chamber Christmas Tree Auction. I will be attending, as well as our colleagues to the west, Kings County, Larry Spikes, he's having a retirement event here in Tulare County, and I really appreciate them spending money in Tulare County. I hope all the out-of-town visitors are staying in Tulare County and spending TOT. So I will also be wishing him a good farewell, even though he's not really going anywhere, but at least in a formal capacity.
All right, now I'll turn it over to Supervisor Worley. You know, Steve, I saw that Candace was fixing your no button, and there's no reason to do that. You never press it anyways, so, but at least you know it works in case you need it today. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Last night, I spoke at a PUC meeting in Fresno. The proposal before the PUC is to charge the ratepayers of our utility companies $500 million to install large truck charging facilities. Now, I want you to think about that for a minute. How many electric large trucks do you know? Answer: zero. And I can remember a number of years ago, when during the Schwarzwanger administration, when they came before the Airboard and they were all pumped up, they were going to put in a hydrogen highway, they were going to put fueling, hydrogen fueling stations all up and down California. And at the time, I thought, that sounded like a Maginot Line to me, where you spend a whole lot of money on something that is absolutely worthless, and fortunately, they didn't, because that's exactly what it would have been. And this could be more of the same, and there, but the thing is, we're talking about taking our money, our ratepayers' money to pay for this, $500 million, and we're already over-impacted by the cost of electricity in California, particularly in the San Joaquin Valley. So I spoke out in opposition to it, said their money would be better spent doing things that could improve our air quality right now by replacing existing trucks with Tier IV trucks or natural gas trucks that would do a great deal to improve our air quality, rather than spend money on something which may never even come into fruition. So anyway, that's what I did last night. The big news in the Worley household was that my daughter delivered on my first grandson on Saturday morning early, and baby and mother are doing quite well, thank you. I will also not be able to be at the Sheriff's Matter tomorrow. I will be, the Air District, I'm on a committee we're meeting to, in fact, the entire board is reviewing the new, the applicants for replacement of our director, longtime director, Sajid Sedrind, is going to be retiring at the end of this next year, actually, at the end of, about midway through the year. And we're looking at internal candidates for that position, so I will be engaged in that. On Thursday, there's going to be a groundbreaking of the self-help housing subdivision in Woodlake. I'll be there to say a few words. And, you know, it's just been a really busy time. I was also at the CSAC conference. One of the things I always enjoy is going to the Finance Subcommittee meeting there they have, and they were speaking about Prop 13, LEO's office talking about Prop 13. They were trying to figure out some way to, you know, to get some more money out of people. And I said, you know, it's been proven that actually Prop 13 has been shown to not be the boogaboo that everybody likes to claim it to be, you know, it's that we'd be okay if we just had our property taxes back. Well, it's demonstrated that under Prop 13, the revenue has far exceeded the inflation rate since Prop 13. In other words, we're back, we have plenty of money coming in from property taxes, but what has never been changed since it happened years ago was the legislature reallocated the money. And many people don't understand this, that today, 60 cents of every tax, property tax dollar, goes to public schools. And if we were to go back to the allocation that existed before Prop 13, it would be a very different picture for cities and counties in terms of our revenue stream, because we have lost that money, not because the money's not coming in in gross, but because the allocation has affected us directly. I made that comment in the committee, because again, it's something that happened a long time ago, and I think people have forgotten about it, and I had a lot of response from people afterwards, including the CSAC staff, that, you know, we need to engage in that conversation, because if we could get that allocation changed, it would be a big difference for local governments. So anyway, so, I thought it was a good conference, and as Mike said, it would always be nice if it had a little more local flair, but that's part of the deal with 58 counties. Speaking of which, we are a suburban county, which is based upon our population, and we have since in the last year, lost two counties that have gone from suburban counties to urban, and that was Fresno, and also San Joaquin. And so we had to reallocate, because there's the, they're spread across the gamut in terms of election of the Executive Committee, which I serve on, so we had to reallocate a particular city or county. But what I thought was of interest is that we've, we're losing suburban counties to urban counties, and actually, I believe Kern County could make that change, too, if they want to right now. But we don't see, we don't see the rural counties coming into suburban counties. In other words, those small counties are not growing. The growth is in the suburban counties and in the urban counties, but not in the rural counties, which has some interesting policy implications, I think, going forward for California. But that's all I have to say.
You had a lot to say, that was great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Just to follow up on the CSAC conference, I thought it was a great conference, and I did have to leave early for a family emergency, but my wife is doing okay now. And I did want to point out, one of the interesting discussions that I had was regarding short-term rentals. I know that's a conversation that Supervisor Crocker is actively engaged in up in Three Rivers. Unfortunately, I don't really have the interest for short-term vacation rentals in the majority of my communities. Maybe Allen's worth there some, preferably, not a ton right now, but I gave that information to Steve, so hopefully, he's been able to get that to you.
He has.
Sunday, we had a great event in Early Mart. What a fantastic day. I'm not very good at counting crowds, but I would like to think that there was at least 500 people at the Early Mart Park ribbon-cutting. What a phenomenal turnout, and what a beautiful park. It is the cover of our Tulare County Budget Book, that symbolizes a little bit of the park, and just really, really a beautiful final product. It was expensive, we got a $2.2 million grant from the State of California. We combined some county funds, the school district stepped forward and put some money in, and together, the partnership yielded a beautiful, beautiful facility. And I want to thank all of the county employees who were there and who have put in a lot of effort into making that park be the beautiful facility that it is today. We have a Space Planning Ad hoc Committee meeting today at 1:00. Tomorrow, the Sheriff and Fire have their open house, and the Sheriff's PAL Bike Giveaway tomorrow at 9:00. LAFCO meets on Wednesday at 2:00. Tulare Redevelopment Oversight Board meets on Wednesday at 5:30 at the Tulare City Hall. The Tulare City Redevelopment, or Former Redevelopment Successor Agency, is doing a good job of liquidating properties finally, and the hope is to have everything liquidated before we get to a county-wide oversight stage, and that is going to be coming in 2018. And so they're moving forward with that, and hopefully, those various properties that they're liquidating will actually yield some economic development benefits in the city of Tulare. Friday, we will be having the Lindsay Ad hoc Committee meeting at 11:00. I was Chair of TCAG back in, I believe, 2011, was when the Measure R funds were discovered to be misspent, and the City of Lindsay is definitely in a very difficult financial position and has come forward and asking for some assistance, some of which, some of the requests even being altogether forgiveness of that misspending of funds, or double billing, however you want to look at it. But there is a forensic audit that will help guide the ad hoc committee through its decision, and I look forward to coming up with a resolution that's in the best interest of the taxpayers in Tulare County and specifically in Lindsay. The Deputy Sheriff's Association will be having their Christmas party Saturday at 6:00. That's always a very well-attended event, and they do a great job, and I believe they are still donating the proceeds of that event to the Neonatal Foundation, and I think it's at Quea Delta, maybe it's Valley Children. Bless you.
Thank you.
And then, lastly, I wanted to make mention of a TCAG workshop and meeting at the Ad Hocation's Office in Tulare Monday at 10:30. And then the last thing, kind of on a personal note, I'm really excited that Movember is over. My wife isn't a big fan of the whole facial hair thing, and I'm not either. I really like the clean look, but I got some pretty cool pictures that I'm going to enter into the contest this year. So I had good fun with it, so I took an attempt at looking like Supervisor Crocker for a picture. Yeah, so I got a few things to choose from. I tried the Shucklian look, I just couldn't get it to be thick enough.
Well, see, no, you wouldn't, you couldn't. I noticed that.
All right, well, that concludes the Board of Supervisors Matters, and we will now move on to Item 2, which is Public Comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item within our jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda. Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here wishing to speak under the public comment period? You can use either microphone.
Is this good?
Yeah, that works.
Okay. Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Spot, and Ms. Peterson. I'd like to take this time briefly, I'm already at four seconds, okay, to introduce our new Department Secretary, Annie Haynes. She's replacing Jasmine, who was with us for 28 years, so she has some very big boots to fill. She's from the local labor market, she lives in Three Rivers. She's, again, Woodlake High School alumni, so you know she's tried and true, great Woodlake alumni.
It's nepotism, is it?
No, absolutely not. And she attended UC Davis, graduated with a degree in communications. She lives in Three Rivers with her five-year-old daughter. Look forward to big things from her in the future. I just want to take a brief moment to introduce her. Annie?
Thank you, good morning. Yeah, I'm really excited to be working at the Fire Department. We're very fond of the Fire Department in Three Rivers, since those are our first responders, so, yeah, it's really exciting for me. My daughter loves the fact that I work for the Fire Department. She thinks I should ride in fire trucks all day. So, yeah, I'm really happy about it, so thank you, I really appreciate it.
Great, well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I've got a new office just for you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any additional public comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the board's agenda. At this time, we will take up the Consent Calendar. I have a request to remove Item Number 4 and Number 11 from the calendar completely. And then, Item Number 30 will be pulled and moved to the December 12th board meeting, which is next week. Are there any additional items that board members or members of the public would like to have pulled or commented on?
Seeing none, I will move for approval of the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Innes and a second by Supervisor Worley. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously to approve the consent calendar. I do want to make one comment, I didn't need to pull it for separate consideration, but on Item 28, we have the bid results from the Avenue 144 Rehabilitation Project. The engineer's original estimate was $3.477 million. The low bid came in at 3.6, I'm sorry, at $2.623 million. So we actually are about $800,000 less on the actual cost when that goes to construction, so I'm encouraging our Roads Department to take all $800,000 that we've saved and spend it on District 2 road rehabilitation. That would be fantastic. With that said, we will now move on to our untimed portion of our meeting agenda. Today, since we have about 10 minutes until our 9:30 timed items. Item Number 30 is a request from the Probation Department to approve the distribution of AB 109 base funding estimated at $17.789 million.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that item was pulled.
Oh, shoot, what am I, yeah, I'm reading, I, you know, Ron Burgundy, Ron Burgundy from the internet. Don't deviate from the script.
It had to do with getting that more money for roads than your, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I was so excited about additional road.
And I want to point out that the chairmanship will be changing in the next 30 days.
Also, that motion died with lack of second.
Yeah, there wasn't a motion, it was a suggestion, it was a suggestion. Sorry to cause such stir amongst my colleagues.
Oh, no, I just wanted to highlight that, that's all.
Item 31 is a presentation given by the General Services Agency outlining the contractor prequalification process for the Sequoia Field Programming Facility. Mr. John Hess.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spot, and Ms. Peterson, John Hess, Deputy CEO, General Services Capital Project. His presentation is regarding the Sequoia Field Programming Facility prequalification process. So the facility will be a 256-bed detention facility with tiered housing and 52,000 square feet approximately. There is an additive alternate which would increase the total bed to 288 beds, but that, of course, depends on the favorability of the bids. The project, in contrast to the South County facility, is going to be primarily a programming facility, which will house low-risk offenders, it'll have vocational training services, it'll have culinary arts services, it'll have a variety of rehabilitative services, which are not present in the Porterville Jail. The existing buildings on-site, which I have a diagram in a few slides, will be demolished, and the new facility will be built on that property. So the project is funded primarily by the State of California, $40 million in grant funding, the same kind of funding, and I'm saying grant, but it's really lease revenue bonds, but it's the same kind of funding that we utilize for the South County project. That was 60, this is $40 million. It has a $10 million match requirement, half and half, half in-kind, half cash match. We are currently in the 100% design development phase. There's three phases of design with the State of California, SD, DD, and CD. This is the design development phase, which puts us 2/3 into the project, or the design of the project. The construction cost estimate is under $34 million at this time, which is the construction budget. We are anticipating starting construction in July of next year with, it's a little bit under two-year construction, so April of 2020 would be complete, which is occupation about July of 2020. Again, in contrast to the South County project, that puts it about two years behind that project. This is an aerial photo showing the overall property. If you're familiar with the Sequoia Field property, there's a lot of property the county owns. I'll use the kind of pointer here, there's, the juvenile facilities are up here. You've got Bob Wiley in pre-trial here, of course, the Sequoia Field and the remaining hangars. And then this is the old World War II facility that was built to house training areas. They had a parade ground, just a whole lot of different facilities that were utilized to support the training of almost 19,000 pilots at Sequoia Field. This is a closer look at the construction area. Everything within the yellow box is included in the project area and will be demolished and cleared. Those buildings are previously determined to be hazardous and substandard and have gone through all of the red tagging process and CEQA process. This is a schematic layout of the project. You can see the kind of wheel, the round portion of the building is the housing area. That allows for greater monitoring, which increases safety for not only the inmates, but also for the detention services officers. It also reduces the number of detention services officers that are needed at any given shift, in that with a centralized monitoring platform in the center, you don't have to have multiple DSOs at each bay overseeing those bays at one at a time. They can do them jointly in one central location. That's an aerial photo kind of rendering of the project, once it's constructed. You can see, again, the circular podular design, exterior rendering, and another exterior rendering. So specifically, the request this morning is regarding the prequalification process. I wanted to provide that background information and sort of a project status, but what we are at right now is requesting to proceed with the prequalification process, wherein we would use a questionnaire to establish a list of qualified contractors to undertake this project. This was utilized successfully on the South County project. We did not see any impacts with the bidding and competitiveness or anything of that nature. So again, we believe it's advisable to undertake on a project this size and scope. The advantages in that way are that it ensures a qualified pool of bidders. When we do go to the competitive bidding, we know that those bidders who are able to bid are qualified, that they don't have excessive claims or liability, you know, that they meet the minimum requirements that we've established through this process. It reduces the claims and costs during construction. It allows us, it gives us the opportunity to identify their experience with the complexity, the size of this project, and in particular, the detention facility-type hardened structure that we will be building. And it was utilized, it's utilized almost by every county in the jail construction program, and of course, we utilized it on our South County project. Disadvantages that, and we made this the same presentation a year or two ago when we did this for the South County project, and we went through the disadvantages at that time as well. The first one, of course, by nature, is limiting the prospective pool of bidders. That is naturally what we're doing here, so some see that as perhaps creating higher bid results since there's less competitive nature between those bidders. This, in theory, is offset by savings from project delays, claims, and change orders, of course, and we've seen that on the South County project. We've only had a handful of change orders, nowhere near the amount of change orders that we would see on projects of that size. We're in the hundreds of thousands of dollars in a $52 million project. So it does have the potential of reducing the likelihood of local bidders, which is to say that if there's a local bidder who's able to do a project of this size, may be discouraged because of this prequalification process. We did not see that, again, on the South County process. There's very few local bidders who could do a project of this magnitude, and the real impact locally is seen through the subcontractors. The vast majority of the work is undertaken by local plumbers, local trades, and the materials are purchased and sourced locally, and so we've seen hundreds of jobs established and made through the South County project. So while the contractor, the prime contractor themselves may not be local, most of the subcontractors they use would be. So if approved, we release the prequalification RFQ this week. Response is due in January. A committee of five staff who are familiar with the questionnaire would get together thereafter and rate and rank them, compile them, bring them back to the board in February, which keeps us on track for construction in July. Simultaneously to that, we're working through the third phase of design and obtaining all of the necessary approvals with the State of California. So there's a lot of multi-tracks going forward on this project at one time. So that concludes my presentation with a request to authorize staff to proceed with the prequalification process, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from board members, Supervisor Worley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know there were some issues. I guess we've worked through those as far as historic nature of this site. It was given that designation. I remember we tried to kind of fight it at the time, but we didn't, we were afraid it would create some obstacles. The other thing, I just, and it's not related to this, but I just see the renderings. I saw the landscaping, which I think is a good idea, that would appear to be kind of a zero-scaping, low-water type of thing. I just want to make sure we've got landscaping in the plants, because when we built the other facilities up there, we did not. And it's still one of the greatest, in my mind, it's just a travesty up there, the way things look on the, from a landscaping standpoint. So, hopefully, we're going to, I want to be assured that we've actually got funding available for that.
Yes, and we actually learned that not only on the South County project, but on those North County projects. We, incidentally, are experiencing some moisture intrusion, actually, on some of our buildings, because there's no landscaping to absorb naturally some of the water that seeps in from the rain gutters or from just the nearby planting beds. When there's no plants there at the juvenile detention facility, we're actually seeing some negative impacts on the structure itself because of that. So, not only is it a visual thing, but it actually protects our assets as well.
So, are we doing something about them?
Yes, yeah, that's actively being investigated to see how we can not only address the inside, but also the outside of that building.
John, I have a question. There's, in the project area that's within the yellow boundaries, the things that are to the north, are those newer or are those, what's up?
So, those buildings are actually currently in use. The ones within the yellow are not being utilized for any, they're actually deemed red-tagged. They can't be utilized for any purpose. So, the ones to the north actually have property evidence in them, most of them, what they're used for at this time. Day reporting center is a little bit further north of that as well.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from board members? Members of the public? Okay, if not, the chair will entertain direction. I have a motion from Supervisor Anis.
Before we take our, one quick thing, when I first came on the board, I remember my predecessor, actually, before I came on the board, and he made the comment about this facility, says it's had more facelifts than Ja Ja Gabor.
With that, I have a motion from Supervisor Anis.
Well, Ja Ja's gone.
A second by Supervisor Shuckley. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, John, for that presentation. All right, we will now move on and go back to the 9:30 timed item. I've been waiting for a full-page, single-line agenda item that I'm going to have to read before the presentation begins. So, item number three, a public hearing, a request from the Resource Management Agency to certify that the Board of Supervisors has reviewed and considered the information contained in the addendum to the 2012 Tulare County 2030 General Plan Final Environmental Impact Report for the Hamlet and Community Plans 2017 update is applicable to the General Plan Amendment and associated zoning ordinance amendments for the Hamlet and Community Plans 2017 update. Come on, Mike Washington, and as being in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State CEQA Guidelines, including CEQA findings, and the mitigation monitoring reporting program for the Hamlet and Community Plans 2017 update GPA-035. That's the opening sentence, and I will stop there, Mike.
Thank you. I would just call it the disadvantaged communities grant. Go from there. Anyway, thank you, Chairman, board members, Mr. CAO, County Council. Today, for your consideration, is what we're labeling the legacy Hamlet and Community Plans. It's also part of the final report for Strategic Growth Council Grant that we received for disadvantaged communities, infrastructure, and planning policy. In 2014, Tulare County applied for and was awarded a grant to foster development of sustainable communities, help meet the challenges of adopting land use plans and integrating strategies to transform communities and create long-term prosperity and promote equity, strengthen the economy and protect the environment, and promote healthy and safe communities. Project was funded through Strategic Growth Council's Sustainable Communities Planning Grant and Incentives Program under Prop 84, and it was meant to implement SB 244. The final report, of which you're going to consider as part of your actions today, includes community engagement and outreach, infrastructure analysis based on the existing land uses, and suggested infrastructure improvements based on community prioritizations and land use changes and zoning changes that we'll be going through later in this presentation as well in these communities as feasible. The selection process for this was very extensive. Cal Environment Screen ranked census tracts in California based on potential exposures to pollutants, adverse environmental conditions, socioeconomic factors, and prevalence of certain health conditions. That's one of the first screenings that we do. Then, staff identified those communities in our county that fall within those census blocks and scoring in the top 10% of the statewide. We also looked at the Housing Element Action Plan 9 and the implementation of SB 244 plan that your board adopted a couple of years ago to choose and select the communities for this project, as well as we partnered with Self-Help Enterprises and utilized them in community outreach, and they had some input on which communities this should apply to, as well as Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. They added communities based on their experience as well. I believe there, I think there's representatives here from those two organizations that will probably speak during public testimony. So, what we ended up with was 21 legacy Hamlet and Community Plans, five of which, the legacy Community Plans your board adopted previously back in October. The ones you're under consideration today are the Hamlet Plans and the Community Plans. This map just indicates that these communities are spread equally, really, pretty much throughout the valley floor of the county and identifies their locations. So, the project development stage, the first stage was to gather community information through census data, municipal service reviews, working with the local PUDs and the CSDs, and engaging the community members at meetings and utilizing surveys and outreach that way. So, we went out to number, and we'll talk a little bit more about the community meetings, but then the second stage was to analyze that data, draft the disadvantaged communities infrastructure report, and develop the legacy Hamlet and Community Plans. Then, we went, again, for stage three, back to the communities, showed what was proposed, the draft plans, the proposed zoning, and received feedback from that and made fine-tuning of those based off the community input. And finally, the final stage is the public hearing process. We went to the Planning Commission an hour before your board for final adoption today. So, on the community outreach was based a lot on surveys. They had a very extensive five-page survey that really asked questions about schools, libraries, housing, fire and safety, emergency response times, infrastructure as far as water, sewer, those types of things, storm drain, road conditions, just about everything that you could imagine. It's very extensive. Some of the, a summary of some of the survey results, you know, people would come up with their biggest priorities, and we'll talk about prioritization in a moment, too, but about traffic, about health, about libraries. All of that was all part of this very robust community outreach. So, as I said, we had a number of meetings throughout the communities. This is just a few pictures of a few of the different meetings throughout the area. We really encouraged the participation, listened to the people, and then included their feedback in the final documents and the community plans, because these are their blueprints for their own individual communities to go forward. With this, we had over 40 meetings specifically on this, as well as numerous other meetings with Safe Route to School and others. We had 290 completed surveys, and again, I said they were fairly significant. They're five pages. It takes time for people to fill those out. It wasn't just a one-question type of thing, so it was a detailed survey. There was some support petitions signed. Over 600 people participated in these meetings. We partnered with the public utility districts, the school districts, community groups, churches. So, and all, we partnered with about 42 different community groups. And the data collection out of that, this is just a sample of London's, a piece of London's information, is you can see how detailed it is, is how many miles do you travel to a clinic? And then, there's a graph of showing how the distance traveled and type of transportation you use to get your children to school. So, it's very in-depth, the analysis. And all of this is part of the final, it's in the appendix of the final report. For each community, there's detailed findings for all of this outreach. And then, again, prioritization of the concerns and issues. This is a sample of, for Allensworth, this is their top out of their report, that they itemize. And again, what the groups would meet, they would break off in small sections. They would talk about their priorities, and then they'd get back together in a big group and look at all the priorities and, as a group, kind of itemize them and put them in a list of the community's top interests and concerns. This also goes to implementing our general plan. There's a number of implementation measures in the planning framework element, and 18 through 22 numbers is talking about considering factors of using mixed-use designations, sources for funding for the Hamlet Plan, which we were able to successfully pay for through this grant from the state, criteria for preparing the implementation schedule, creating the Hamlet Plans and the documents, and environmental documents. All of this has been, so this is a big step of implementing our 2012 general plan as well. Part of this is to amend the zoning ordinance, which you're under consideration today, where we're adding mixed-use zoning, which allows a lot more by-right uses, really sets the base for economic development opportunities for these communities. One other factor that I didn't mention, that as this process was along, we met with a lot of small business owners as well in these community meetings to really help get the groundwork laid, so they have opportunities to succeed. So, we don't, so a lot of these areas, well, 20 of the 21 communities never have had community planning documents before. So, they, a lot of them had A1 zoning, which is really a holding zoning pattern that kind of has, it's a challenge to get things built, development in there. So, what we've done now is all of these hamlets will now be ready and right for development opportunities. It's not that we have money to do something, but it's set the groundwork that these communities have the opportunity to move forward. This is, I'm not going to read this list, but these are all the individual project numbers and zone changes that we have as part of this packet. Now, I have, I'll run through this fairly quick, but these are the zoning. The smaller sides is the existing zoning, and the larger map is showing what is proposed. And you can see, it's hard to read on this, but as you can see, the red is a mixed-use overlay zone and a commercial zoning. So, when you see the red, that's a lot of more commercial type of activities. So, like here, and you see in Allensworth, we've rezoned where the state park is to something more appropriate, recreation. And then, we've added some, based on some requests from the community, added opportunities for some commercial development south of the main road coming in from the south into the community. In East Tulare, the East Tulare Villa, you can see the existing zoning didn't really have any commercial. There was one small market there. But in the proposed one, there's some commercial development there along Bard's Lee, across from the new COF campus, and up on 137 as well. And another thing I'd like to mention, too, is that this corrected a lot of zoning for what's existing on the ground as it is now. There may be some grandfathered uses that are zoned one way and the use is something different, so we've tried to correct that, so, to clean that up, so to speak, as well, as part of this process. And Munson is another one. You can see that the existing zoning really had very limited potential for any mixed-use commercial zoning, just that small little tiny triangle. Now, we've expanded it along the main line in there, just providing opportunities as well as what's on the ground already there. And Toniville, again, adding some mixed-use opportunities for, and sometimes this will be a very small market. Potentially, someone's wanting to do a restaurant and might be living on the property as well. You're seeing it now in Visalia downtown, the mixed-use, the apartments above and the retail below. A lot of people will try to be able to do that, and they'll be able to do that now in this without creating large special-use permits and environmental review and all of that to go through that. We want to knock those hurdles down, because that can be a very costly thing, especially for maybe a family business or something like that. So, this has really cleared the deck for them. So, on the final report for the disadvantaged strategies for the infrastructure and policy for the report to the Strategic Growth Council, I just summarize a little bit, and this is in the final report, that this project has met all the requirements of the grant and the goal to increase the opportunity to go for other grants. This really sets the plate for our competitiveness when we apply for grants. We've already done extensive community outreach. We've got the community saying prioritizing what they need, what infrastructure. We've rezoned the lands to accommodate what the community wants. We also have a lot of road information, too, so if we're looking at Safe Route to Schools or ATP, we've done the community outreach as well. Number of these have, we've integrated, again, the silos are down, so we've really integrated between public works and planning, so there's a number of opportunities out there, and we've really moved that forward. Outreach, one of the things that we learned here, that technology wasn't really the best for the outreach here. This was on the ground, door-to-door, taking flyers to the schools, to the churches, and setting up meetings that way was the best way to get the results there. Infrastructure, the deficiency, we've been able to map many of the communities that do have systems. We have good up-to-date mapping of that. There's going to be challenges with Sigma and the new LAMP program for onsite wastewater, so those are going to be challenges coming. We're moving forward towards trying to get everything that we can, get accomplished, we can. Greenhouse gas, air quality analysis, there's extensive analysis in the environment on this, that because of the better jobs-to-work balance created by the mixed-use zoning and the ability of more jobs to be created locally in these communities, it really indicates a benefit to reduce vehicle miles traveled. So, that's, it's all under the air district and our Tulare County's climate action plans thresholds, all this rezoning. We've increased, well, we've decreased some of the ag land that was within the hamlets, and we've increased commercial areas, 65 acres of commercial and 51 acres of industrial, and increased the potential for 1,000 new homes ultimately, if they were to build out on this new rezoning, as well as clarifying and strating the zoning for the existing land use as well. So, we've got potential for new, and we've kind of cleaned up what's existing. And the housing survey analysis, that was part of the study, and it really documents that the relationship between the median income, unemployment, and poverty really, it did not have a super-significant effect on the substandard housing. However, there is a need for housing rehabilitation, regardless of level of income or poverty or unemployment in these communities. So, those are some of the basic, quick findings there. So, the project, as far as our general plan goes, we've, as the outcome of this, we've been able to implement the general plan as far as the planning framework element. We've been able to inventory our infrastructure, and that will help for planning and grants going forward. The data that we have and the documentation of the community needs is really helpful in those regards. Again, 21 legacy Hamlet and Community Plans, 20 of them had never had any community planning before, so this really sets the groundwork for the next 15, 20, 30 years. But these are going to be living, and one of the reasons we broke these out to individual items is each one can be changed and adopted as needed as an ongoing basis. So, these are living documents, really. And then, we have the environmental report and the CEQA done on this, so we have a lot more opportunities for development that's already, the zoning's already been analyzed, so we do have a lot more by-right activities and uses in these areas. So, and then also, the community is aware, the community awareness of all the zoning and the changes and the land use changes that we have and the economic development opportunities. There's a number of businesses we met with down in Rich Grove, a recycling business that was coming in, asking about the process, and this was just a couple of weeks ago, asking about the process to get a use permit. And we're like, well, if you wait a couple of weeks, you'll be able to come in with it and just come in with your building permit, because it complies with the particular zoning. And that's occurring all the time. That's not a one-off situation. We've worked with people in all of these communities, and so this is really an incentive, and this is really a catalyst to get some of this stuff going. People have dreams or thoughts of doing something, but they might not have the big budget to be able to proceed with all the use permits and all the CEQA. Well, now, we've set the plate for them to move forward in a real efficient manner. So, that's been replicated throughout a lot of the areas. So, we really have project-ready communities now as a result of this. So, I'd really like to thank your board when we gained authorization to apply for this grant a number of years ago, and the CAO's office and Mr. Spata on his direction, and our community partners. Again, I believe there's a few here, Self-Help Enterprises, Leadership for Council, Justice and Accountability, all the school districts we work with, the public utilities, public utility districts, community service districts, churches, small groups, all of that, the small business owners, as I said. And finally, the RMA staff that's really gotten it done. This has been a monumental task, many late nights, including a couple of all-nighters, trying to meet deadlines and stuff. So I'd really like to acknowledge the, I know there's some members here from our team, but, and some people that worked on this are no longer with the county. Kira worked on this, this is one of her projects she was working on as well, and a couple of planners that are now, have moved on. Katerina, who now works for Mr. Spata, she went out to a few of the community meetings early on as well. But we have, from the Public Works Department, we have Rosa Sanchez and Pedro, Jbed and Johnson Vang. There's extensive mapping done. You see just the maps for the zone changes, and those are parcel to parcel. But all the infrastructure mapping and all of that took a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of effort. And from the Economic Development and Planning Branch, Sandra Saban is working on this, and she's one of our top grant people. Susan Simon, Velma, Chuck, Dave Bryant, Jessica Willis, who's the extensive, she's a fairly new planner from the Air District, and she did extensive greenhouse gas analysis for this and other environmental documents that we do. So she's an outstanding team member. And then Hector, and I think I mentioned Dave Bryant. But then also, this really was driven and led and really the project manager, and it really wouldn't have come to fruition if it wasn't for Aaron Bach. Aaron Bach really took the lead on this, and he brought this thing to dock up here to the final stages. So it was a fantastic team effort across the board, and I think that concludes my presentation. Again, I summarize, because you probably have four pages of action items, but I'll just summarize that requesting to hold a public hearing and that the board certifies that you've reviewed and considered the information contained and then send them to the 2012 General Plan EIR. Adopt one general plan amendment for the hamlet and community plans update. Waive the final reading and adopt amendments to Ordinance Code, Section eighteen point nine, Section sixteen of Tullary County Ordinance Code, three fifty-two, and the individual map amendments for each of the communities. Adopt the findings set forth in the Planning Commission's resolutions. Authorize chair to sign all necessary zone changes. Direct the clerk to publish the summary ordinance and amendments. Direct us to file the notice of determination with the clerk. Authorize RMA to make minor technical revisions as needed, because there are sometimes from time to time a typo or something that needs to be clarified. And then finally, to adopt the findings in the Planning Commission resolution for the final report that will be submitted up to the state in about one month from today. And that's it. If you have any questions?
Well, any questions or comments? I, you know, I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to RMA. I mean, what a monumental task. I mean, this is a monumental binder that we have in front of us that's very, very packed with information. And I know that you've put a ton of effort into this, and I think that you've listed every employee that has worked for RMA or is currently working for RMA in Tullary County's history. So I thank you for that. But really, it was an effort that you put forward and various community organizations. We appreciate our partners that helped do the outreach that was necessary to come up with these documents. And like you said, this sets the blueprint, the framework, the groundwork, the roadmap for the future of these various hamlets or very small communities. And, you know, the role of government isn't to direct and force growth to go somewhere where it's not going to work. But what we can do is lay the infrastructure, lay the framework for growth to occur and growth to exceed and development to succeed, and it will come. I mean, just your example in Rich Grove, it's a fantastic example as to why this is so important that we do this. And we have done it for, like you said, the twenty-one different communities now. And so there are going to be many cases of projects and developers coming forward, wanting to do something and bring jobs, bring growth to an area. And instead of having to go through an onerous and in many cases, very expensive process, they're going to just be able to come to the county and get a permit and go to work. And I think that's a really, a really great achievement. So I thank you very much for all your work on this, and I thank you again to the RMA team for all the effort that you put in to make this happen.
Other comments?
I'd just say kudos to what you said, and thank you for your hard work. The big winner's going to be our communities. They'll know what they can and cannot do within their communities, and they're the real winners. And Tullary County as a whole is going to be a big winner. So thanks again for your hard work in getting this thing done and getting it put before us this morning.
Supervisor Worthy?
I think the key word you said there, Michael, was opportunity. And when you look at what we had prior to this, so this is, this is a monumental task. And it, this is sort of the ending, I look at Dave Bryant, because it really began with the general plan. And in the general plan, if you look at the no-action alternative, if you looked at where we were before we started this process, these communities could not grow. They were zoned in the agricultural oblivion. There was, in many cases, they were mis-zoned in terms of what was already there, but certainly for any chance of opportunity of growth or expansion, there was zero. And so now, having gone through the general plan, and then again, I mean, that was a monumental task. But then it's one thing to lay the groundwork in a general plan. It's quite another then to actually go forward in implementation. And this is a big step in the implementation process. So that, as you say, we're now at a point where landowners and business people and people who want to build houses can come in and they can get building permits and they can go to work, whereas in the past, they couldn't even get to first base. I mean, they might be able to do some special use permit processes and different things. This is just a great strategic day for Tullary County. And I think the communities will look back on this day, what we're going to do, and they're going to say, thank you, Board of Supervisors, because you have given us a future. Whereas in the past, these communities really had no future. They were more abound in these little areas that could not grow, and we've had to deal with a lot of consequences of that. And new housing and opportunities for schools to flourish and businesses to grow and people not having to drive great distances to receive services. This is a wonderful, wonderful day, and I just want to thank, thank all of the staff, people, our partners that were engaged in this. It's a very, very important day, so thank you.
I just want to reiterate that part of it is having these communities access to services, just basic goods, like you said, a market and things like that. So hopefully in the future, with this plan and implementation, it will happen.
Supervisor Crocker, you're the only one left without comment.
Three Rivers. We're not done yet. This is our first step forward. We've got, Three Rivers should be released. The draft environmental report should be released in the next few weeks, and we're working on Goshen, followed by Cutler Rossi.
Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here wishing to speak under the public comment period. Again, public comment can and will be limited to two, three minutes per person. Please state your name and address before addressing the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Vanderpoel and Board of Supervisors. My name is Abigail Solis. I work with Self-Help Enterprises. And we had the pleasure and the opportunity to facilitate the outreach and engagement portion of this project, and it was a large undertaking, that's for sure. We facilitated about twenty of the twenty-five community meetings and outreach and engagement for this project. So as was mentioned earlier, that was very involved. In order to get the information that we were able to collect for this project, we did door-to-door to make sure that everyone knew that they were invited and an important part of this process. When we got them to attend these meetings, we did do, like was mentioned, almost three hundred surveys. And along with the surveys was also a very important conversation and discussion had at these meetings, where we gave people an opportunity to tell us what they would like to see in their communities, the kind of changes that were important to them. And because of that information that was collected, we were able to put together reports that you now see. And from that conversation, we learned that these communities really want to see improvements in their roads and their sidewalks. But I want you to feel comfortable knowing that the information in these reports really came from the people in the communities because of the efforts of Self-Help Enterprises and also Leadership Council along with the county. I do want to thank all of the RMA staff who worked tirelessly on this project, all of the planners involved, as well as, was mentioned before, Chief Planner Aaron Bach, who I think was probably at all of the forty-plus meetings with me over the last eighteen months. It was really a large undertaking, so thank you to everyone involved. And lastly, I do want to mention that this was really an opportunity to begin a discussion. Many of the communities had never had an opportunity to talk about what they want to see in their community and how they want it to grow. So a lot of what we heard at these meetings was, thank you for coming and asking us what we'd like to see done, but what will happen now? Is this going to be one of those things where you just come and you ask us what we want to see, and then we never hear from you again, or will things actually get done? The last thing they want is for this to become a document that just sits on your shelf and is never used. So we did our best to explain to the community how this is a very important first step towards making things happen in the future. And I think most of them got a sense of why this document was critically important. But just want to remind you that they will be out there waiting to see what grants come as a result of this work. So again, thank you all, supervisors, for hopefully approving this document, and Self-Help Enterprises was pleased to be an important and big part of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. My name is Pedro Hernandez. Address ten twenty North White Street in Hanford, California, nine three two three zero. I work with Leadership Council here in Tullary County, and we are also a part of this community outreach effort in partnership with Self-Help and again, RMA. And shout out right away to Aaron Bach, who's been keeping us in the loop as well and, you know, clearly demonstrating his competency in leading this pretty, you know, you know, remarkable planning effort here in Tullary County, because not other counties are, or have embarked on a planning project of this scale and magnitude, or those who have started have not, you know, finished as well, too. So this is, you know, a great first step, again, for Tullary County as a whole and for the communities that have benefited. One thing I would say is that this was a very important beginning of a conversation that should be ongoing with these communities because this was a very participatory process in educating residents in what could be possible with land zoning. But also, again, now some of these residents are more aware of the possibilities that could, you know, potentially be realized in their communities. And again, this is important as well because I think everyone here knows that the Central Valley is going to be absorbing a lot of population in the upcoming years as well, too. So at least from our community conversations, the residents that we've talked to see their homes and their communities as places to keep living in and possibly absorb some of this growth as well, too. And finally, I think this, these updated plans should be also considered in future regional transportation plans and other plans that are already in process. I know the county is updating its overall transit plan to connect, you know, the buses and get them more synchronized as well, too. So not to say that there aren't any processes, but I think this is something that should continually be at the forefront of, you know, a lot of conversations here. And finally, again, we'd love to continue working with the county, whether it's, you know, seeking further active transportation projects, which are grants, and something that is within the capacity of the county to pursue if this is a decision that the board wouldn't want to take as well, too. So my time's almost up, so thank you again, and looking forward to keep working with the communities that we all hopefully are working together to improve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Ralph Piero, representing Allen's Earth, more specifically the Allen's Earth, the Piero family of Allen's Earth primarily, but also as a community. I, we've obviously gone through many changes over the past, well, my sixty years at least, trying to get things going as far as community improvements and being considered potentially a viable community. And one of our main concerns and problems has been that the designation as a agricultural zone rather than a mixed sort of zoning. And so to me, it's very important, and we are very grateful that this notion has taken hold. And I think as my family is concerned, we're interested in trying to develop some facilities and possibly businesses as well. And I know in the past that Environmental Loon Pack was a huge weight upon any kind of progress that we were trying to make. And veritably, it'd be some notion that this animal or that animal had to be taken in consideration, and you have to have this amount of land, or you gotta set aside this, you know, a hundred acres here, two hundred acres there, and that was always an impediment. So I'm hopeful that this will help iron out some of those, you know, very rudimentary but very vital parts of the way it needs to be set aside so that people who don't have the ability to make, you know, great investments in terms of capital, but have land that they want to develop are able to do so in a constructive way. And appreciate this reporting, this effort, and hopefully this will be just the beginning. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comments this morning?
Morning, Board. My name is Ralph Piero II. As you might imagine, I'm related to Ralph Piero there. I live in Delano, California. I have attended a lot of the RMA meetings and plannings for Allen's Worth, California as part of the Allen's Worth Progressive Association. And I wanted to just make a comment here on the part of the APA. Just that the efforts of the RMA are very much appreciated by the Allen's Worth community. Obviously, you heard from my dad there about his plans, having plans for development on his land. There are several members of the community that have been wanting in the past and currently, of course, to be able to develop their, just all kinds of ideas for development of the Allen's Worth community specifically, that have been, again, hindered by a lot of the zoning issues and a lot of the difficulties that would be part of that. So I just wanted to speak again to the end that this, the efforts of the RMA, the efforts of the people here and the ruling here as far as this rezoning will be well-used by the community of Allen's Worth specifically, you know. There are a lot of people that are looking forward to being able to deal under these new kind of much less restrictive capabilities, you know. And we're very thankful for all the efforts that are here and happy to see this day.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the board for further discussion and direction in action.
We've approved, Mr. Chairman. Of all the things that were listed in that long list that Michael told us we needed to address today.
All right, I have a motion from Mr. Christmas Ty and a second, I'm sorry, Supervisor Worthy, and a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and look forward to the growth in Allen's Worth, too. So thanks for coming today and supporting that as well. Okay, next, we're going to move on on our agenda to take up item thirty-two, which is a request from the General Services Agency to award the contract to Forkham Mackey for the design and construction of the Forensics and Evidence Building in an amount not to exceed three point six zero two, six hundred and forty-three million, subject to review and approval as to form by county council.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spata, Ms. Peterson, John Hess, Deputy CAO, General Services, Capital Projects. Presentations regarding the property and evidence project, specifically awarding the construction contract to Forkham Mackey. So the project, very briefly, is to relocate the current property, evidence, and forensics investigation crime lab facility from its present location, mentioned earlier at Sequoia Field, to a new location in the city of Tullary. The current location is wildly outdated, very undersized, in terrible, terrible condition. So we, not only is it, it's a necessity really for the county to move forward with this for a variety of reasons. So the project includes the construction of the following components: new construction of a ten thousand square foot storage and processing facility, renovation of an existing six thousand square foot building, which was previously the old Superior Court School. That will be used for the crime and forensics lab, and then the construction of a new two-bay vehicle investigation garage. vehicle investigation garage. The prequalification process, we did do a prequalification process, as suggested earlier this morning on the Sequoia Field project. We conducted that in May and June. We received three responses from Forkham Mackey, Bush Construction, and Seals Construction. Each of those met the minimum qualifications. So then we worked with our design architect or bridging architect, Vanner, to do bridging documents. If you recall, this is a design-build methodology, which we release sort of a thirty-five percent level of engineering documents out for through an RFP process. And so when the construction actually begins, there's not a full set of plans. They're doing the plans and constructing at the same time, so it's a way of getting construction faster than the conventional design-bid-build methodology. So those were released in June, responses were due in August. We only received one of out of those three from Forkham Mackey, and so we spent September, October, November, doing what's called value engineering and contract negotiations with them to get their contract price down to a budget that would work for us. So the final stipulated construction price of the project is three point six million dollars. The this includes both additive alternates, one for the vehicle garage, which is where they conduct investigations, forensic investigations on vehicles seized or involved in a crime, and the initial price before the value engineering was three point six million for the base, excluding those two items. So we reduced about ten percent off of the off of the price through the value engineering process. With the construction, it would begin immediately, as mentioned previously, because of the design methodology, we'd go right into construction, at least on the underground work and clearing and grubbing, demolition, things of that nature, while we're also finishing design on the structure itself. The documents allow for two hundred and eighty-seven calendar days of construction, which would put the construction to be ended just about the beginning of September, which allows us to be fully occupied by the end of two thousand and eighteen calendar year. Forkham has indicated they would like to be done quicker, but the contract documents allow for that, so that's the schedule we're using right now. This is, although maybe hard to see, this is a schematic design of the civil work that will be done through the project. You can see, and I'll point with this here, this is the new building that will be constructed at about ten thousand square feet. This is the existing building that's going to be renovated. We're going to enclose a garage, so that'll be a new formal part of the building. Here is the vehicle garage. As you can see, it was an additive alternate, so it was just a dashed building. Now it's going to be permanent. And this is the pavement that will be done for accessing the building with perimeter fencing in various secure locations. So just to mention the design-build methodology again, the final product may look somewhat different than this, as well as the renderings I have on the next few slides, because we're surrendering a bit of control to the design-build team, which is comprised of Forkham and their sub-architects. It makes it move faster, but we end up having less control over the end product. So, for example, we had the debate or the discussion as to whether or not we should use design-build on our jail facilities. We decided not to, because the Sheriff's Office in particular wanted to know specifically how the end product would be designed. That's less important, given the type of this project, this little more simple, basic project. So here's a rendering that was developed early on by the Sheriff's Office. Again, the final product will look a little bit different from this, but that's the basic gist of the storage building. This is the renovation building of the existing building. Again, the final product, a little little different, but it'll include a variety of functions inside the forensics lab, as well as meeting areas and intake and processing for for evidence. So with that, request that the Board award the contract to Forkham Mackey in the amount of three million six hundred and two six hundred and forty-three dollars, and authorize the Chairman to sign, subject to County Council approval. Have to answer any questions?
One question that I have for you, John, being that I was on one of the various ad hoc committees that's been working on this for, it seems like, a couple of years. What was the first proposed price that came with the construction of this facility to the Board, when they were hoping to build something that was out of solid block wall and everything else that was necessary to become a, I believe it was, I don't remember, certified facility?
That was in the seven million dollar territory with for the for the construction and the renovation of this project, because that CMU block wall was excessively excessively expensive.
And so through the ad hoc committee process, we were able to get this to a point where we can still meet the certification, correct?
Correct.
But with a different material, but it's still sufficient to get the certification that the Sheriff's looking for to become a certified lab. And so basically, we were able to take this down three and a half million dollars. And that really does, to me, show value in the ad hoc committee process, because had this come to the Board at a price tag of over seven million dollars for this facility, we don't have the money to do that. And this is something that we've already budgeted and that we can feel comfortable in moving forward with. So I'm very happy with this and glad to see that we're at this point and look forward to having this thing built, hopefully even sooner than September. Any further questions or comments by Board members?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, second by Supervisor Ennis. Any public comment before we vote? Nope, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we will move on to item thirty-three, request from the General Services Agency to approve an amendment to Agreement number two seven eight zero eight with D L R Group Inc. for design changes to the Sequoia Field Programming Facility project to increase the agreement amount by fifty-eight thousand from two point six nine million to two point seven four eight million, subject to review and approval as to form by County Council.
Yes, so good morning. This is a pretty brief item. This is a contract amendment to the design engineering contract that we have back on the Sequoia Field project. We're adding fifty-six or fifty-eight thousand dollars. It's split into two categories, fifty-six for HVAC or mechanical and two thousand for electrical. The the purpose of this amendment is to integrate the county's standard HVAC cooling system into the building using a central plant central plant methodology. The recommended design mechanical system that the company wanted to use, that the engineering company wanted to use, was not tested, and we don't utilize that in our facility, so we decided that it was better for us to utilize this. It'll allow us also to add a T E S tank, a thermal energy storage tank, in the in coming years to reduce our our electricity consumption there. So it's a it's an expandable system that allows us to kind of be consistent with our current facility maintenance environment. So this this money here ends up being spent well for us in the long run. So with that, happy answer. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from Board members? Chair will entertain direction. Move for approval. I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Crocker. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Council, that concludes our open session items. Do we have need for closed session?
We do. Item A is off calendar. We have items B through F, and I do expect an announcement out.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for attending today's Board of Supervisors meeting. Have a great week, and we'll see you next week. Meeting is adjourned.
This is Deanne Peterson, reporting out on item C. The Board of Supervisors authorized legal counsel to seek appellate review or relief in the case of Tina Kuyumjin versus County of Tulare, Tulare County Superior Court, case number P C U two seven zero nine three four. The adverse parties are Tina Kuyumjin, Charlotte Kuyumjin, represented by Alexander Reed Kreis of Kreis Bailey Reed Kreis. This case involves a motor vehicle accident. The roll call vote was on the motion of District One Supervisor Kyler Crocker, second by District Five Supervisor Mike Ennis, on a five-zero vote. This concludes the reporting out for today.